The Olbridge Planning Boards, if everybody would stand and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, wait, roll call, please.
Mr. Lenning is absent. Mr. Hagopian?
Was it?
Mr. De Palma?
Here.
Mr. Lauer?
Here.
Mr. Renner?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Ms. Musella?
Here.
Mr. McGyserick? Absent. Mr. Brennan?
Yeah.
Mr. Farrar?
Yeah.
And Chair Winken.
Okay, we have the minutes of the February 22, 2024 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move it.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lauer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hagopian?
Yeah.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Okay, and the resolutions is 01-2024P, Olbridge Entertainment LLC Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Second, roll call, please.
Mr. Hagopian?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
And Chair Winken.
Yes. Resolution 45-2023P, St. Mary and Archangel Raphael Coptic Orthodox Church Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Mr. Dyer?
I'll second.
Second, roll call, please.
Mr. Hagopian?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
And Chair Winken.
Yes. Okay, under applications, 35-2023P, LE Development Group LLC has been adjourned to date, to a date to be announced with further notice. So do we have to do anything with that?
Historically, our board has approved those by vote.
Oh, okay. So do I have a motion to agree to the delay or adjournment?
I'll move it.
Okay, move by Mr. Lauer, roll call. Our second?
I'll second it.
Okay, second, please.
Mr. Hagopian?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
And Chair Winken.
Yes. Okay, and the application on for tonight is 42-2021PA, Segme LLC Glenwood Country Club, amended major preliminary and final site plan certified complete 4/5/24 and expiration date 8/3/2024. Good evening. Good evening.
Again, for the record, Mark Poli Castro, attorney for the applicant. I believe this is a fairly straightforward application, famous last words. We have one witness this evening, Mr. Lam. Please state your name for the record.
Tung To Lam, last name L-A-M, first name T-U-N-G hyphen T-O.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening? Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And just super briefly?
Do you want to give your credentials?
Your credentials. 2004 graduate from Ashes Institute of Technology with bachelor's science degree in civil engineering tech, PhD candidate from Muckler in civil environmental engineering, licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey and a surrounding state, license still in good standing.
Thank you.
And whose birthday is tonight?
My son's.
Nine years old.
Oh, okay. That's important to know.
You have a brief presentation, is that correct?
Very brief, six exhibits. Really just want to highlight there are a couple changes and just a before and aftershock. So it's really just three sections that we want to go through.
And just for, when you say exhibits, these are new, they haven't been provided to the board already, or these have already been provided to the board?
Brand new exhibits for tonight's.
So we'll mark those, right. Thank you.
Do you want to mark them individually, sheet, or as a package, or?
Whatever the board's pleasure. We can do it as a package. Yeah, why don't we do it as a package and just identify when you switch sheets, which sheet we are looking at? And if you could just identify what the exhibit is in general. Just describe with the date. What all the sheets are together collectively, excuse me.
Collectively, they are a sightline exhibit. It's a package of six sheets in total, prepared by Boulder, and it is dated 4/22/2024. The first sheet is sightline A.
T, just give him one minute, it's taking time to load.
So the first exhibit is sightline A. This is the highest point in the previously proposed sound wall. The prior sound wall just consists of a 14-foot-high fence, basically, from the edge of the driver aisle. There was some concern about screening and things of that nature from the original application, and the simplest texture that we had to propose at that moment was pull-up fence that's 14 feet high, and we labeled it as a sound wall. But as construction went on, we were noticing the surroundings, and we came up with an alternative idea, which is what we want to present to you tonight, which consists of a landscape berm. And on top of the berm will either have landscaping and/or plantings. So what we think, what we're proposing is a better alternative to what was previously proposed, which was simply a 14-foot-high wooden fence. So the first exhibit, which is section A, highest point in the sound wall, which is at elevation 54. So at the top of that previously proposed sound wall was at elevation 54. And what is shown in red is that cross-section that we took. And at the bottom of that page, it simply describes from the left-hand side, which is the Glenwood Apartments, to the right-hand side, which is the proposed warehouse and the cross-section in between them. And once again, the height of the sound wall is at 54, and that's of importance. And Danny, can you flip over to the next sheet, which is sightline B? So sightline B is the same as sightline A. Sightline A was taking a point where the sound wall was. Now, what we're proposing on the bottom is the earthen berm, which is either a function of a slope on the side of the grass berm. And on top, there's a six-foot-high fence, and there's additional landscaping. So the top of the berm that we're proposing is at elevation 55. So previously, the sound wall was at elevation 54 at top. On the berm, we go one foot higher with just soil. And on top of that, we're proposing plantings. And at the time of installation, it will be at an elevation of 61. So we're comparing elevation 61 to 54, and that is at the highest point. So we also cut two more sections on the bookend of the proposed sound wall previously. So Danny, if you flip over to the third sheet, which is exhibit C. So exhibit C is showing the sound wall on the western end of the site. So at that sound wall elevation, that's at 52. Once again, we're going to do another comparison. So Danny, can you flip over to the next exhibit, which is D? So same exact location, but now with the berm option. So the berm is at elevation 46, but the planting is going to get you up to elevation 51, and the fence is going to get you up to elevation 52. So we're comparing the previously approved sound wall at elevation 52 versus elevation 52 in this also condition. And then the last two exhibit is on the eastern end of that sound wall previously. Danny, can you flip to sheet five, which is sightline E? In that section, the sound wall elevation is at 49, and you can go to the last exhibit, which is exhibit F, sheet six. If you take a look now, the berm itself is being proposed at elevation 45, but at the time of planting, both the plants and the top of the fence is at elevation 51. So we're comparing elevation 49, that was previously proposed, to 51 now. So what we had in mind was, we are either going to be equal to what we previously proposed or better as part of this alternative solution. And that's why we're here tonight. And we did receive a review letter.
So you believe it's a better plan, is that correct?
Yes.
Why, in layman's terms, why is it?
It's a softer look. You know, you're looking at greenery, there's a smaller fence, six feet high at most, as opposed to just, you know, 14-foot-high fence that you're looking at. So we believe that this is an improvement overall.
Okay. What was the first one again? What within two numbers?
First one, top of sound wall was at elevation 54, and the top of planting is at elevation 61.
Oh, 61, I had them.
So significantly better.
Okay.
So the planting, that's going to be the size of the planting when you initially put it in?
Initially install, correct.
And then?
It will only grow higher.
What plant, what plantings are you putting at the top of the berm?
They're evergreens.
Okay.
And if there's, say, other suggestions with your board professional, we could work with them.
So we spoke to them, we're going to, I do have some recommendations regarding to the planting. I mean, they have two species, like it's Douglas fir and Norway spruce, so.
It's more or less going to be evergreens that are going to grow into each other.
Yes.
Rotol and even further block the sightline from Glenwood Apartments into the warehouses.
Exactly.
And the intent is to landscape that whole berm with different, you know, trees and shrubs and things like that?
Correct. And if the trees die? We have a maintenance span for a minimum of two years. Two years? Minimum, yes.
Does the staff, any other comments?
Before, before Mr. Kay goes into, like, deeper into the review comments, I just want the board to understand that, you know, when, when the revisions came first, I was trying to see if I could administratively approve it. The only reason they are in front of the board is because when we had a resolution of approval, one of the condition of approval was the sound wall. So there was extensive testimony provided at the original hearing, there was a mention of the sound wall in the resolution, and that's why I recommended that the applicant come back to the board and explain to the board why they're doing. I believe that from the sound wall, because that was a request that had come from me, but I believe the landscape berm is more aesthetically pleasing. I also know that the applicant has reached out to the neighbor, which is Brunetti owns the Glenwood Apartments, and they have tried to work out where in Brunetti would have some input in where the trees would be planted. I think there was a request that most of the trees be planted on the applicant's side versus the Glenwood side, which was a weird request, because usually you would see neighbors saying that plant on our side, but it has come from the Brunetti organization. They want to see more of the plantation on the other side. The applicant and the entire professional team had a meeting yesterday, as well as this morning, to go over any concerns that we may have. They have agreed to work with us on fine-tuning the species of landscaping that is going to go on the berm. The one thing, T, we agreed is there is one section of the berm where the berm goes lower, and I recommended that the fence be 10 feet high instead of six feet, and the applicant has agreed to make it a 10 feet. The ordinance allows you to have a 10-foot fence in a non-residential zone, and I think that there's one section where you need a higher fence to provide adequate screening. I think I covered everything, right?
I think you did, yes.
Yes. Mr. Kay?
Can I, are you going to, do you have some comments? Because I wanted to ask a couple of questions. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, just, is everybody aware where the berm is?
Yeah. Well, I don't know. Does everybody know where the berm is?
Where, where it is on the site, too.
The one thing we didn't see was the site where outward where the points were from.
Can you put up?
The collective site plan that shows all the exhibits captured in one?
Danny, can you pull up near maps?
As long as the applicant doesn't have an objection, we're just going to explain what it is. Judicial notice, yeah. Absolutely no objection.
Can you orient, can you orient them?
Yeah, north is the top of the page. In the middle of the page is Route 9 running in a north-south direction. Their largest warehouse, you see on that plan view, that is the warehouse in question. And the berm that's being proposed is at the tip of the building, closest to Glenwood Apartment, where the mouse is right now. And the Glenwood Apartment is the existing buildings you see to, near, between our project and Route 9. And the buffering is to screen their apartments from the closest point of the warehouse.
So basically, the berm goes along the, that corner there?
Yes.
Basically. And it, it varies in height. In the middle section, it's where it's the highest. I think it's up to the top, it's like 18 feet tall. So that's definitely going to be better than, than what the sound wall was before, which stands, and we're going to landscape it, or they're going to landscape it. And then, as you go to the, I guess, north, it basically stays the same elevation, maybe a little bit higher in section. When you go to the south, yeah, the other way, it kind of, it has a little dip in there because the road has a high point, and the berm is basically the same elevation. So that's where we're trying, we went, we went in to put additional fence in there. And I think from speaking with the residents, that kind of gives us a better avenue to landscaping, because if they wanted on the other side, what they were doing, they were putting three-to-one slopes on the resident's side, so we could put some additional landscaping. And one of my concerns was that the level planting area on the top of the berm was only like five feet. So I was trying to stretch it out so you have a wider area to get more plants on the top, to stagger them and make it more dense. So if we can, you know, steepen that side up, we can expand on, on the top of the berm and give it a better planting area. And we've had conversations, and they're willing to, you know, do a lot of landscaping. We can actually reforest, I think, you know, part of the previous hearings, there's saplings that were supposed to be placed at various locations, and one of my questions was, have they been designated, designated locations yet? And apparently, they haven't. So what we can do is recreate a really nice reforestation out there. We can select some really nice species, beech, American sycamores, oaks, and restore that area, just so it'll, it'll reforest.
The, the original planned sound wall, that was to mitigate sound or view?
Yeah.
Both. And how does a berm compare in terms of mitigating sound?
So I had done my research, I'm not an expert, but before I even said, you know, it's a good idea, right, I had done some research, and apparently, when the berm is two feet taller than the sound wall, it does the same, or it has a better protection with acoustics, noise, and, you know, visual barrier of, obviously because of the height, but even with noise. So I had confirmed that.
We could also confirm that as well.
So that is why.
The reason why we don't see berms as often is you don't have that much property.
Correct.
For the affordability to put a berm in lieu of a sound.
Correct. And I mean, if you've traveled along, in New York State, you see a lot of those sound walls, and to me, they look very rigid and like harsh, whereas when you see a landscape berm, it's much softer on your eyes and more aesthetically pleasing.
And then the previous solution didn't have any landscaping in front of it. It was basically just the wall.
Another comment or question?
So my question was that we're going to put up a 14-foot sound wall, not a wood fence, as per original plan. So now that was going to be 895 feet. So now, at the height, where we're going to go down to 5.2 to 8.5 feet, is going to be about 300 feet. What is the decibel of noise differential between the berm, the trees, and the wall, and the soundproof wall? And the reason I'm asking this question is, we do have residents that live there.
I might just clarify one, that there's only one, a small spot where it's that low. The rest of it, the road dips down, so that.
Correct, correct. I understand. And I also understand that when we are putting the trees and everything up, and we put the wooden wall up, or the wooden fence, it's not going to be maintained, it's going to be put there, it's going to rot away in a couple of years, the trees are going to die. The only reason I know that is because that happened with the Olbridge Oaks, where they built a berm, put the trees, they die. Nothing has been done.
Yeah.
So what are we doing with this, let's say, three, four years down the road, everything falls down, and we have nothing to show for it?
I mean, this is a huge project, there is a maintenance bond, our inspectors go and inspect it. There have been times on other projects, too, if we see the trees dying, we have had asked the developer to replace them. With the applicant, we have been working with him for the last five years now, and every time there has been a complaint or has been an issue, he has been more than willing to work with us or take care of it. So obviously, the township professionals will keep an eye on it, and we will monitor it, but I am pretty confident that they will be maintained in a.
No, that's fine. I just would like to know what is the decibel difference between the sound wall, which is 14 feet high, and having the berm and everything else, which is going to be about 10 feet high, eight, 10 feet high?
Now, I'm talking off my memory. I think it was two decibels, something like that, but I'm not too sure.
Okay. Will we find that out at all, or is comparable?
And at the end of the day, we still have to meet their state requirement and the township requirement, so either option, we will comply with that.
Right, because the state has its own regulations for sound, as well as the township has a performance standards ordinance, which they have to comply, which the police enforce as well. So this is just to approve the physical design, but they're, they still have to go through other steps and comply with the other sections of the ordinance which pertain to the sound.
All right, thank you.
And just to give you a little comfort level on the, the trees, we've, on all their sites, they, they've agreed to put drip irrigate, that's why the trees die, because they just don't have enough water.
Well, I know that, there's irrigation, and I know.
Yeah, so, so they've agreed on all the other projects to put drip irrigation, and it's been pretty successful where we've had it. I mean, it really, you know, spurs good growth and keeps them healthy. So we don't anticipate, I mean, you're always going to have some death, and they're going to have to replace that. But generally, it, it makes, you know, it provides good means for them to grow and maintain.
I just wanted to ask, though, as far as the, the ongoing maintenance, you know, as long as the builder is involved and is active in, on the site now, it's understanding, you know, that he'll maintain it, but what happens 10 years from now, or do we, do we, you know, we used to do, which I know they got rid of, about maintaining, having the township hold on to money to provide maintenance. But yeah, I mean, what's going to happen in 10 years? And what if the warehouses are sold and not, you know, maintained by?
I mean, it's, it's very hard to control that at this point, right? We, we can only ask for, as long as the maintenance bond is in place, but what would happen after 10 years is, we'll keep an eye, court enforcement goes and looks at properties. If there is a problem, if they see violations, they do inform the owner, whoever it may be, whether it's Mr. Gersberg or someone else, they would still enforce those. So, I mean, I don't, I.
I think that's a fair statement, yeah. This is not a build and sell developer. There's a history to this, I think you can.
No, I understand.
If you look at what he's done elsewhere, just not here. And elsewhere, he's built and kept it.
Generally, what, we're going to be working with, with the developer on the type of vegetation. And the vegetation we select is, is pretty much native, and it handles this. And if, generally, if. generally, if something's going to die, it dies in that first year.
True.
You know, it's not, you know, all the time, but you can see whether it's stressed out before the maintenance bond comes out, so that, that is the key, if, if it, if it looks like it's starting to die, then, you know, during the next planting season, you know, it should be replaced, and.
I actually agree with Mr. K, because we do have a project on Route 34, which is an active construction site, it has been under construction for last two years, they're, they raise a berm, the trees are dying, and we have been, you know, the engineering office has been following up with the developer, because the project was sold, it's a new developer now, but he's still tied to all those improvements, and he, we are ensuring that they plant those trees, so I, I'm not too worried about these ones, this is, this is a huge project, it is going to take a couple of years, if they have to die, it would have, it, it will die in the first one year where they would have to replant anyways.
And if, and if it looks like it's not going to make it, you know, past the two years, you can always extend the maintenance bond, I mean, you know, it's not satisfactory.
Mr. Lowery?
Yes, I'd like to say, the sound wall versus the berm, I'm in favor of the berm, I think it makes a pleasant view, and it cuts down on graffiti, because if you had, nobody goes and puts painting on grass, and I think it'll look nice, what, the wooden fence on top, will people be able to get around that or over it?
It's a solid stockade fence, minimum six feet high, some sections, we are agreeing with your staff to increase it from six to 10, so.
Okay, so it'll be secure?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else, yes?
Is there any way?
I'm sorry, that, yeah, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what that, there's a yellow line, there's a couple of yellow lines there depicting, is that the edge of the berm, is that the property line?
Those are lot lines.
Lot lines, okay, so where would the berm begin and end according to that yellow line?
Can you show the area again?
I'll show you. Yeah, just keep in mind, the yellow line here is GIS property line, so these are not surveys, so we have survey documents on our file, but there's significant room between the pinch point of the, the property line, as shown on the GIS mapping, and the corner of the building closest to Glenwood Apartments, but it's roughly 800 feet around that corner.
So what would be the depth of the, of the berm itself, from the widest to the narrowest?
It varies based on the height, so it's a three-to-one to two-to-one, so, you know, every foot that goes up is either three feet wide, or it's two feet wide, and then it's two sides to it, so, it's a trapezoidal shape.
But the berm would be on the warehouse side, not on the Glenwood side?
No disturbance on off-site property, all the disturbance is onsite, no changes to the roadway geometry, no change in size of the building or anything, it's simply between the curb line that was previously approved and the property line that remains the same, and all work is within the subject property.
Do you have an idea of what the, the distance between the trees would be, I mean, how thick is the density of the, of the trees and shrubs or whatever you're putting in there, between them?
It varies, and we're still in discussion with your board professionals to.
Yeah, generally, it's 12 feet, 12 to 15 feet, depending on the species, some are more broad, evergreens, some are more narrow, and the idea is to try to mix, mix them in so you can, you know, cheat a little bit on, on the sizing, so it still allows them enough room to grow, so that's what we're going to be working on, I mean, maybe we'll have some green giant arborvitae's and, you know, red cedars, maybe some, you know, American hollies, you know, Norway spruce, hemlocks, things like that.
I agree that a shrubbery and trees are much better than a wall, but it's going to take quite a few years for it to grow in and actually become a barrier, a soundproof barrier.
Um, do they want just the berm itself and the fence itself achieve what is equivalent to what was this 14-foot-high sound wall, so the planting is just bonus on top of it?
Yes, did you?
Instead of, instead of having the wood fence, would it be possible to get the vinyl fencing?
If that's the preference, we, we're simply proposing wood, because that's what we did at the Jake Brown South project, that's nearly complete, and that's near control, so.
Be consistent.
We can switch, but we're just looking to be consistent, so.
Is that what you want?
I was just asking.
We don't think that would be preferable.
I was just asking, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, so, we're open to hearing it, but I don't think that was the intent of the design.
I think let's be consistent, we have been using the same fence throughout the project now, I would really not want to change it.
Any, anybody else have questions or comments?
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree that the berm is certainly aesthetically much more pleasing, and if you're saying that it's going to have the same effect in terms of the noise thing, my only concern is the Jericho, having lived in a development for 50-some years with a lot of trees, they're all starting to fall down, and we're having a lot of major issues in our green belt, whereas why we bought there a lot, so, but I guess I can't, I don't know.
As long as there's no.
Forward that.
As long as there's no power lines right near those.
Oh, yeah, but we have power lines in our thing too, which make it really hazardous, but, anyway, all right, and you're, you're saying that as far as the effect for the, the noise aspect, it's as good or better.
Yes.
Than, than the noise, the berm, I mean, the original. All right, anybody else have any, okay, do you have any, Vina, any final comments?
Nope.
Do you want to sum up?
Absolutely, so a vote in favor of this would be a vote in mending the site plan, a prior site man approval, it really is limited to just with regard to the change in the sound wall, which was a specific condition of approval, that was granted for the site plan to allow for a landscaped berm, as been testified before the board, no other waivers or variances are being requested, all the original approvals will remain in place, including all the conditions of approval, with regard to this particular amendment, the applicant agreed as a condition of approval that they will work with the board's professionals to, for the location and the type of plantings that would be included on the, the berm, they were agreed to increase the height of the fence in certain areas to 10 feet, working with the board professionals, and that they will also work with the board with regard to potentially steepening the slope in certain areas to allow for a larger planting area at the top of the berm, once again, working with the board professionals and reasonably, in a reasonable manner, and that is what I have in addition to just the standard conditions of approval, the continued conditions of approval that were for the underlying original approval, aside from what is being amended by this application.
I presume there are no public comments?
Oh, yes.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. This is no one here.
Sleepless nights, I would remember that.
Yeah, we do have to open it up to the public for any questions or comments.
Right, anybody from the public want to speak? Eric, does your daughter have any comments?
I don't know, I don't know if my daughter wants to come up here and speak.
Apparently not.
Taylor Swift just came out with a new album, so I'm sure that's what's going on right now.
All right, seeing no hands, we'll close the public portion, and, okay, any other comments, otherwise I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Hi.
Moved in second, roll call, please.
Mr. Hagopian?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Mazzella?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
And Chairman Ken?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, it better be beautiful.
It will be.
Okay, do we have anybody from the public that would, has any comments? Okay, if not, I'll close the public portion, we, I'm informed by our attorney that we need to go into executive session.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, we do have an executive session to discuss this evening with regard to the RD management pending litigation, so if we can have a motion in second to move out of a public, a public session into executive session.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, roll call.
Mr. Hagopian?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Mazzella?
Yes.
Mr. McCaughy, is that, Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
And Chairman Ken?
Yes. Okay, we're in executive session.
Just go ahead.